Good evening, folks. It's seven o'clock. We'll start this meeting. We're going to stand for the pledge, if you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That was robust. First thing on is the traffic ordinance review. I would assume, certainly you are here for that. So, when we were going through the ordinance, I'll give you the brief overview, and then we're going through the ordinance, it was suggested to find out whether or not we wanted a one-way street on Liberty Street. I think the basis, and I'm speaking for other people, that the basis was a safety concern. But, other than that, it was a suggestion. It wasn't, it isn't written in stone. And we, one of the things, one of the things we learned the hard way is we're going to go to the people, make sure they know, so everybody should have been contacted one way or the other. And that's what we're here for. We're here to hear what you got to say. So, anybody want to start? You're welcome to.
I got a question maybe.
Sure.
What's the safety concern? We got the chief right here. Does he have safety concerns for Liberty Street?
I don't think it was the chief that brought that up. I think it was just one of the selectmen. In a general discussion, it wasn't like it was, you know, it wasn't a big thing. It was, it was a talk.
My recollection, there might have been something about, there was concern when, if a vehicle parks next to the Wooden Soldier and someone's walking down the sidewalk, they, they might have a tendency to step into traffic. It was, was the only extent. It wasn't a lot, but that was the only thing, what I heard.
The safety concern that I brought up was there's no, if you come off of Main Street and step onto Liberty, there's no actual sidewalk, since there used to be when you had the, you know, I mean, at one point, there was a raised sidewalk there. So, that was my suggestion to the board, was to continue to maybe the sidewalk around that side, which would alleviate some of the parking issues we have and pedestrian traffic.
I think another thing, too, is when it gets really busy, you have vehicles parked on both sides of the street, so it gets pretty narrow down through there. And I've heard some concerns with tractor-trailers unloading, that it does get pretty tight and hairy down through there, so.
You know, if there's a lot of traffic, when, if it were one-way, would a tractor-trailer say if you were going to go down to Cottage? If there's a lot of traffic, how could you, like, expect a whole eighteen-wheeler to cut that corner safely without impeding the safety on other traffic?
And another question is, why couldn't we add signs, or a sidewalk, or painted lines to show traffic, rather than making the entire street having to go all the way around and cause even more safety concerns along the way? Because there are no sidewalks along my road on ten Main Streets. So, there's nothing for anybody to be walking around, et cetera. It's just, it would just create more traffic in the area in an unnecessary way.
So, correction me if I'm wrong, there's a understanding buses aren't allowed to go down Liberty currently. Who's, is that from the town, or is that from the businesses?
They go down Liberty. They can't make the hill in the wintertime if they go down Cottage.
I was told by several bus drivers that businesses get pretty...
I'll explain that. So, at one point, we were having a problem with buses always came up Liberty Street instead of going down to Cottage.
Okay.
So, we went to the bus garage in the school, and there's a policy, it's not law, a policy that they go down to River Street and then come up the hill. Unless the, unless it's snowing and this hill's slippery, then we have them try to come. So, the bus doesn't spin going up the hill.
Yeah.
Something we tried to address, because when you've got multiple buses coming through with tractor-trailers and cars parked on both sides of the road, because it's so narrow, that was the policy that we agreed on.
Yeah, but my wife's a bus driver, and she's seen other bus drivers go down there. She's like, uh, probably tell them they shouldn't be doing that, because they think it's like a no-no, so.
So, can I bring up, because I've heard tractor-trailer, tractor-trailer. They're there in the morning. Obviously, you guys are hitting on me a little bit with deliveries, and they use tractor-trailers to deliver. Most of our deliveries, I'll take place in the morning, sometime between the hours of, say, nine, could be noon, but it's probably nine and eleven o'clock. And then they're gone. The concern with traffic being parked, or cars being parked next to the Wooden Soldier, I never see any cars parked there. The Wooden Soldier and/or for Haven House, a pizza, tractor-trailer parks there to deliver down the alley for them. They're at least on the right hand, you know, the right side of the road and not parked on the wrong side of the road. And then they're, you know, they're gone. They're making their deliveries, they're gone. Bakers is there for maybe a half hour, forty-five minutes tops, and Farrell's is even probably a little quicker. They, because they always have two guys on truck, they're in and out. And milk truck pulls in to the parking lot, free dope truck, there's only two tractor-trailers that come to us. Maybe a third Jay Pollak, but use them in and out as well. But they're all, most of them are out in the morning.
No, and I think that's why, like, it was just kind of brought up when we were going over, and that's why Joe sent out the letters to you. Uh, you, nothing's been set in stone. We just, you know, some safety stuff was brought up that we've seen as a board, and that's why we invited you here tonight for this discussion. So, we're not, like Bob said, we've learned our lesson from the downtown projects, so we want to make sure we get input before we do anything. So, that's why we're having these conversations. So, we're not, not personally attacking you or your business. We're just, there's some safety concerns that we've seen, and some people brought to us, and we're just having that discussion.
And that's why I'm here, to discuss.
We appreciate it.
Just for the record, you're against it.
I am against a one-way, for the record.
Yeah.
One hundred percent. And so aren't this group of people that I have. You guys can have this copy if you'd like and see, but in four days, you know, we filled up four to five sheets of signatures.
Probably, we'll take it if you want to give it. It's, it's, you know, the people that are here are the ones we're concerned with. It's, and to have other people say it, that's fine, too. That, that helps.
Right.
Rose?
When it was first brought up to me, I was very much against it. But then I got to thinking, I go to the, particularly Wooden Soldier and Lucy's quite often, and it's a real big pain in the butt to try to back out. It's bad enough trying to see traffic coming up the hill, and you think you're all clear, and you're just about to pull out, and then somebody whips around the corner from Liberty Street. Guess my only thought on that is, I, I wouldn't have a problem with it being one-way because of that. But... Give us...
Just two things. One, someone said something about lines or sidewalk. We have attempted that, and it doesn't work unless we have actual police enforcement handing out tickets, but that's also going to interfere with Steve's business, which I'm pretty sure he's not going to appreciate more his customers. And the other thing, if this were, and I am against it, but if this were to be implemented, which way would the one-way be? Would it be up from Cottage Street or in from Main Street?
I think we talked about in from Main Street, but I don't know.
And everybody go down to Cottage?
But, you know, I'm not, I'm not prepared to make that, that decision with the sentiment, sentiment of people, but that's my opinion, so.
Just looking for information, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Josh, you got anything, or as long as you're here?
Not really. I mean, I think it's good as a two-way. The, the problem that I see is when the cars are parked on both sides of the street, it creates a little bit of a congestion issue there, and it, it does block my inventory that we keep nice and clean from people being able to see. So, you know, I think we don't want to hurt anybody's business in town, and we want everybody, and we want to be fair to everybody else, too, so.
So, your solution...
I don't have a whole lot to add to it, you know?
Isn't there no parking in front of your dealership, or your car's inventory?
So, supposedly, there used to be no parking there, but there isn't anymore.
Oh, okay, because I said, I think this left board tried to have a sign posted on the fence next to your barber shop, and now we have to go back to the police department as far as enforcing no parking.
Right. Yeah, there hasn't been any, any no parking in a number of years there, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
There hasn't been any complaints either. That's, that's important to know. There really has. It is tight there sometimes, I'll grant, but it's tight at lunchtime, which is a big deal for you, but I don't, I don't...
Well, it's tight during school times, too. So, I brought it up originally, because every year, I have different people coming to me talking about wanting it to be a one-way, right? And unfortunately, those folks aren't speaking up online. They didn't show up today. That's all right. That's fine. You know, and I brought it up as, hey, we should have this conversation again. I don't necessarily think it needs to be a one-way, but the issues that I see are when it is a two-way and cars are on both sides. I don't go down that street when the tractor-trailers are there, but I'm there during after-school and after-school activities. It is winding and weaving, people walking, people crossing both sides of the street, doors flying open. It's a mess, and so how do we resolve this mess? One solution, I, I think would be a great solution, is parking on one side, maintain the two-way. You know, I think there's ample parking in the area for all businesses.
It's all mine.
The, on the street. I think there's...
On both sides of this building is all good.
Got a pretty good parking lot.
Okay.
Ample parking on the street is probably five, six spots?
There's not very many, because you park, and you can't park in front of the ones pulling in. You've got to back out. You know, and then you can't park in front of your parking lot, block traffic.
But we're okay with Josh's business being blocked?
No, we're not, we don't want to block anyone's.
No, I'm just saying, we don't want to block anyone's business, but the solution of doing nothing impacts a business. A business, any business on that road. Doesn't matter which one, it's still impacting a business.
I still, I still think of adding lines, maybe no parking, some no parking spaces, and making it clear for everybody and for the traffic that's there would, would help a lot with a lot of these issues.
Has there ever been lines painted on Liberty Street since the removal of sidewalks?
Yes, there has been.
But if there's no line there now?
But they've been, they've been ignored. Like I've said, there was, there was an attempt at a no parking sign that we never really enforced. There was lines and people parked all over them.
That sounds kind of like a police issue more than, than...
Joe, is there a plan to have that pay, or painted Liberty? No stop, no center line, no?
That's too narrow for a center line. There's no way we could do center line down there.
Chief, you were trying to...
We have painted it over the years, and we'll paint it in a few years, but the problem with the paint is winter comes and it's gone. You can't see it. So, again, my suggestion would be a sidewalk all the way down. If it's raised, they can't park in front of Josh. It forces them to use Steve's two parking lots and they have the spot, you know, make the parking like Delphi Avenue. You can only park on the south side of Liberty Street. That would kind of eliminate that side, and I think it would flow rather, would flow well. It'd be tight, but I think it would flow better. Or maybe put like a guardrail type system where you walk behind the guardrail out. I've seen that on like the rail trails, where the trails over on Lake George, they have like a wooden, wooden walkway which hits up, and that way it would stop that parking. It would help Josh, and it would not really hurt Steve too bad other than the few cars that park on that side. As far as enforcement, we would be there all day, every day. It's, it's nonstop. We can't quit people.
Well, for a while, you would instill in the lesson that you can't park there, and eventually they would learn, it's customer education.
I think that sounds good.
Joe?
It is a good idea, but it's a very expensive idea for, I've, I personally haven't received any complaints about, about this road until we talk about changing it to a one-way. And then I get a million complaints. People call in saying, "That's a dumb idea." We haven't had, as far as I know, damage. We haven't had injuries. We haven't had accidents. But now the conversation is adding hundreds of thousands of dollars of sidewalk to fix something that, I'm going to be honest, I don't know what we're trying to fix. It's very tight, but it's going to be tight at certain hours. I don't, from a standpoint of, I operate on, if I get a lot of complaints, we handle something, and from this point, I don't see anything to fix.
Does anybody have anything else they want to...
I want to hear from the other business owners.
My thing is that Mr. Walk maintains a perfectly fine parking lot that nobody uses. We have cars parked on both sides, and his parking lot is empty.
Oh.
That's not his fault.
That's not empty. There's a guy right there that parks in one of the wooden soldier areas is a parking lot. Everybody uses the Massey's. You go by right now, they're all parked, they're in the bar. The whole neighborhood uses my parking lots. The whole west side, that parking lot's probably packed right now.
Yeah, thank you, by the way.
Which, by the way, I should, I got a phone call from the previously mentioned Tomassite today, and he's against it, too. So, that should be on the record.
I got a phone call from Jay Brown, and he's against it as well. But I would, we've heard from the other business owners. Rick, I'd like to hear what, what's your feeling on?
Well, not that I'm trying to hurt Josh's business there, but yeah. Some of my customers do find it easy to park in front of his trucks, you might say. Of course, sometimes they won't look at his trucks, because they're parked right there, so they leave their shop they're looking at. But that's, and so we do find it handy to be able to park on that side of the street. As far as by the Wooden Soldier, I never see anybody coming.
I've seen, I've seen a delivery truck once in a while.
I have other people that come up that side of the street and pull right up in front of the shop, a spouse, be leaving off their husband or whatever that really can't walk that far. They find it handy to get out of the car and just go right in the door right there. So, they have no drive coming up the north side of the street is going to hurt those clientele, I don't know.
So, I'll just say a couple other things quickly that I try to give, you know, I want all the businesses to do well. At first, when I first opened up there, I was kind of like trying to be a parking police as far as don't park in front of my fence, and, you know, you're blocking my inventory and everything else like that. And I still kind of feel a little bit that way, but on the same token, too, I don't want to hurt Steve's business. And Rick's got, he doesn't have his own parking lot like I do, like Steve does, so a lot of those kind of customers have to park on that side of the road. So, obviously, I've kind of been quiet ever since, because trying to be a decent neighbor and good business owner, and obviously, there's some other people that might have a tough time walking from somewhere else to get into Rick's place, or, or even Tomassie's or whatever else. So, you know, I think if, if there is going to be any sort of solution, it needs to be something where it's, if the businesses kind of come to an agreeance on, because we're the ones that it's going to hurt or help, essentially. Obviously, safety's a big concern, but, and it's probably a primary concern, but it's also, it can't impact Rick's business. It can't impact Steve's business. And, you know, I, you know, I'm fine. Most of our stuff, there's people coming in because they saw it online. Not a ton of people see something driving by, but it does happen. And it is kind of an inconvenience when the, all the nice trucks are blocked, you know?
Anything else?
One, one thought I had was just on my side of the street, maybe having three handicap spots for people that have a tough time, you know, walking that far. Say they want to go into Steve's, or they want to go into Rick's. It's real close, real convenient, and they're handicap spots, so everybody else that's able to walk doesn't park there, so it like leaves it a little more, a little more open. It's just a thought I had, brainstorming anyway, so.
That's a good suggestion.
Yes?
Just a quick question, and I don't know if anybody would have this information off the top of their head or possibly provide it for the next meeting. The, talking about the financial aspect of it, like Mr. Gunter mentioned, the Streets and Sidewalk Reserve Fund, there was at one point over two-hundred thousand in that. Then, I believe, a hundred thousand was allocated to the Cloud Nine, to the Wooden Soldier. Moved here, moved there. Does anyone know how much is currently available, not permitted, in the Streets and Sidewalk Reserve?
I don't think we got that. Reserve, do we have the reserve number on that?
At one point, it was over two-hundred thousand, and then with the, I believe, Devon Neary project, a hundred thousand was moved for that.
Yeah, it's kind of off the, it's kind of off the subject, but...
No, it is off the subject, because Mr. Gunter mentioned the financial part of it in Streets and Sidewalk. So, if next meeting, you could provide that amount that's currently available, not permitted.
When we do sidewalks, we designate out a little farther than this year, so. So, even if we had two-hundred thousand dollars, it's in the reserve, or a hundred thousand, whatever it is at this point. It's probably, the thought process is it's going to a different sidewalk than a brand-new idea that came up this year. So, even if we did do a sidewalk on Liberty Street, which I'm not sure is the best idea, it would be down the road a little bit, so. Anything else? I kind of getting the gist of the feeling. I don't know about anybody else.
No. No, but I, I don't think Josh's idea is terrible. It doesn't make three handicap spots on that side of the road, then that's, that's it. I mean, I think that would relieve some of that congestion if you just, there's a three handicap spots. If you're not handicapped...
Just put one handicap and two regulars or something from his driveway this way. And then, of course, they don't park in front of the Wooden Soldier, anyway, only for deliveries. And my biggest thing, I, I went down there one day, and I sat there for probably an hour and a half during some deliveries. And I sat over by the fence there. I really don't see a big problem there. My, the biggest problem I see is somebody floorboarding it, trying to go way faster than they should down through there. That was the biggest concern. Slow down.
One final thought on this, maybe just putting a sandwich board or a, you know, a note in one of the business's doors, "Please use the parking lot," just a little FYI reminder to the customers. May help.
It can't hurt, but I mean, that parking lot is pretty well utilized.
It's inexpensive. It potentially works. It takes five minutes to wrap the sign and tape it to the window.
Quick question. So, on the minutes, it sounded that it was a discussion of the parking ordinance. I just, I've been listening to your discussions the last few meetings, and you were talking about the park and ride and parking spaces for the apartment tenants. Were you planning to discuss that tonight as well, or just the Liberty Street situation? Because I, I'm interested in all of it, but I...
To be honest with you... I didn't think we were going to finish up, because we were going to get the input on that. We're, once again, some of the, some of that discussion about the park and ride and that kind of stuff was just suggestions. We're just trying to figure out how to, how to do it. So, we haven't finalized that, and it's not on the agenda to talk about tonight.
Okay. I, I just saw the parking ordinance discussion, so I...
Yeah, I think...
Do you plan to discuss that tonight, or that's not part of this conversation?
Well, it, it can be, except it will lengthen. We're not really, we're not really there to talk about it, to finish up.
No, no.
And I just, the whole thing, when we finished the park and ride, we knew there was some changes to the ordinance that had been made for stop sign, and then we started going down to Liberty. Then probably got a little distracted from that. So, tonight, that's why I, I think, and with all the people, and we're, we're pretty sure we're, we're, what I'm hearing, and I just want to make sure before we wrap this up, I'm hearing for the most part, with the exception of one business that says I can, you know, would do something, I'll go along to get along, is pretty much is, don't, don't go one-way. And, and there was probably quite a bit of other sentiment that's not here. So, I'm, that's, that's pretty good, and I'm feeling pretty good that that's probably...
We will try to, try to have at least one more meeting with parking ordinance to, to get finalized. And then do we have to have a public hearing for that, because it's an ordinance?
I don't think so, but let me look.
But we will have...
We have to post it for however many, for those who...
Yeah, we'll, we'll have at least one more discussion and to finalize. And like I said, most of it was, most of it was, was part...
For five minutes of public comment, what I have to say? Okay.
Well, you, it's, it's relevant right now, honestly, it's just a, it's a little bit off, off what I...
Right, right.
We're, but you're, you're welcome to go ahead and say what you wanted to say, and we'll, we'll save it, we'll save it for...
Okay. So, I don't know if everybody here knows me. I'm Doug Laitkona. I'm one of the owners of the B C B School Bakery, which is, you know, between Cloud Nine and Special Road. And then my sister purchased that building last year, I remember. And anyway, she kind of wanted me to, because she, she lives in California, but she, you know, she's been watching the meetings, too, and she asked if I would say a few things just on her behalf as a, as an owner of a building that has apartments. Because we were listening to, you know, when you're trying to come up with inventory of like, well, how many apartments are there? How many drivers? And how many cars do we need to be able to accommodate if we want to accommodate them? So, you know, I've just been thinking, like, you know, I was on the EDC for a couple of years there, and we, we did an awful lot to try to encourage the property owners to develop their buildings, you know, hopefully, like with tax stabilization, to encourage them to use the third floors. They're hoping, maybe we could get some more housing downtown. But, you know, you want to encourage everyone to invest in their buildings and hopefully keep as much housing downtown as we can, you know? And, like, I really appreciate Mike Doran, your thoughts on, you know, when you go by in the morning and you see, ah, the parking lot's full, you're concerned for the businesses that, where is everybody going to park? Customers. But my sister, and I'm sure a lot of the landlords downtown will also be concerned if you insist and make it mandatory that their tenants park on the far side of the parking lot. I'm just thinking in winter, you know, that can be a little problem, because you're making the apartments less desirable, possibly. You know, it might be harder to rent to someone if they come and look at an apartment and you say, they say, "Oh, yeah, it's a lovely apartment," but you're going to have to park way over there.
Well, and from what I've been told, that some of the buildings have in their, like, their...
They're permanent.
They have parking behind their buildings.
Right. There are some that do, that say, the, where Cloud Nine is, there's no parking.
Right.
Where, like, so my sister's living, so there's no parking behind that. So, just thinking, like, for right now, there are two apartments. Like, I know, like those that listen, you know, Bill said, there's one car there now, but there's another tenant. There's, there are two apartments. You could potentially have three or four people that drive. And I know, you know, it was mentioned that, well, you know, according to the state, you only have to provide really one space per apartment.
It's according to ours and Sony. We change that.
Oh, okay. But it, but it just, you know, that could potentially make it a less desirable place to rent. And then, you know, makes it a less desirable place for people to own property. And you want those people keep maintaining their buildings and paying into the tax roll. You know what I mean? Like, we're trying to generate revenue here. So, so my sister asked me to please just say, "Could you please be, you know, like, there's so much you have to balance, but please consider the building owners, the landlord's point of view of trying to..." Like, she's invested a lot of money in that building. You know, there was a lot of things she did to upgrade it, and the idea that, you know, you might have a hard time getting new tenants if, you know, if the, if the parking is so far... have a hard time getting new tenants, if, you know, if the parking is so far away. And then, as a business owner, so I'm weighing up, you know, all these competing concerns, I appreciate what you're thinking, but then, like, I just think, when I, like, we have a, we already have an ordinance for two-hour parking that is never enforced. We already have a policy for business owners, property owners, that you're not supposed to park in front of the commercial buildings, except for loading and unloading, and we don't enforce the policy, and we don't enforce the ordinance. So when you're trying to figure out how to provide more parking, and you're trying to find revenues, I think to myself, why aren't we enforcing the general parking, really? But anyway, you know, those were just my thoughts, my sister's thoughts on that, and I know you have a lot to try to weigh up, and I appreciate all the effort you put into trying to work out these complicated problems, and, you know, I know you'll do the best you can, but just wondering if we're looking at some thoughts out there, okay?
Thank you.
After being on the street almost years, that was one of the reasons I had to get out of there, because nobody enforces parking. Couple buildings down from where I was, the two of them park right there, and they're younger than me, and I park over there. And it's winter time, it's a real, real problem. And I don't know how you're gonna solve it, but it hurts businesses to have people parking there all the time, yet all the businesses. It seems like a no-brainer, but apparently...
It's in most of their zoning permits as well.
Right, right. I don't know how to solve it, but for, it's a really hard thing for a business owner.
Something, it seems like the general consensus, even with Liberty is enforcement, and maybe we look at that more than, you know, trying to make Liberty a one-way or whatever, the enforcing parking over there, I think we should look as a board at getting back to enforcing the two-hour.
Well, five years ago, I remember the marketing tires, you know, and I know...
Probably, it was probably longer than that ago, and I think, we used to, when we had meters, I think, probably.
I took the meters back.
No, dear God in heaven.
I have done this year, I have Rose's parking tickets.
And I know you have.
I can verify that he's writing parking tickets there.
Rose, good. Good enough for you. All right, guys, let's get this back in the circle. Unless anybody wants to say something, we've already said, we've kind of gone full circle, is there any desire on the board to make that a one-way street? Can we look at these guys and say that ain't happening?
I...
We go right down the line.
I don't think we need to change something that's not broken. I think if people would do as common sense, slow and easy down through there, everything would be okay.
No, I agree, but I do think we should look more at enforcement. I don't think, leave it the way it is, it seems to be the general consensus, and I think it's time we kind of earn some trust back from people in town.
Yeah, no, I've heard the people.
I think it was more of a proactive conversation than, you know, reactive.
I agree, and we'll only add that the other one, that you mentioned that we're gonna be talking about, and that the people in the apartments on the other end, we may want to give it some time, we may be trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist there as well, and so I'm just, that's my...
Yeah, I think...
You gotta let it play out for a little bit, and see that you have a problem, then go fix the problem you have. I don't, like on Liberty, I'll tie it back into the Liberty question, there didn't appear to be a problem from what we're hearing from you, and we're not gonna go try to fix a problem that doesn't exist.
And I'm not in favor of it either. So you can rest assured, we're not gonna do it.
We're not gonna do it.
Thank you for hearing that.
Thank you for coming down and doing a little survey, that's not common, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Chris.
Can I leave this with somebody and go to supper?
The clerk will take it.
Thank you.
The clerk will take it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming in later.
Amendments to the agenda.
I'd like to put an appointment to the Economic Development Committee.
New business?
Yes, please.
Anything else, anybody? I entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
This is an appointment to...
The economic.
The economic.
EDC, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of September 3rd.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September 3rd as written.
I'll second that.
Any additions, deletions, or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you. Five minutes for public comment.
Two things. One, when is the town of Fairhaven going to file a quiet title against my family to finally put this thing to rest once and for all, so that way the town of Fairhaven can have a third title to actually sell property out to somebody, because the way the paperwork stands right now, you're leaving the potential buyer open for lawsuits. I'm not sure if you are aware of the phrase caveat emptor, buyer beware. I understand you guys aren't going to give me a comment on that, I respectfully understand that. Question number two, I don't know if, and I wish that would stay, if you guys have traversed a sidewalk in front of her establishment during her business hours. It looks lovely, it looks beautiful, I love the little flowers around the trees, I love the outdoor dining, but she now has roped off and banisters, and the only problem that I see with that is it leaves about two foot wide of space of the sidewalk, and that can potentially lead to an ADA issue for mobility wheelchairs and stuff like that, and it's a safety concern. Other than that, those are my two comments. You're welcome.
I think three feet is the ADA, so we'll check that. Yes?
My question is, with respect to the upstairs, the community center, has Bill, I believe his name is Bill Nevers, the electrical inspector out of Rutland, has he signed up on the Phase Two portion of the construction perimeter upstairs?
He can't sign up yet, because the non-interfering wiring has to be removed first, which the abatement has to be done prior to that, of the asbestos, which we've already spent money on.
Has he signed up?
I have no idea that anything isn't signed up, but, Joe, do you have a?
Thank you for your time.
So is that, but he accepts my question and is going to answer, so I would take it that, is there a date set for the open house that we've been asking, the community's been asking for us from the last meeting?
Meetings.
Meetings?
No.
Is the upstairs ready to be utilized by the new recreational director?
I'm not sure, we're waiting for, we're waiting for something to come through on heating, so that's probably where we're at.
So on heating, is the heating?
So that's it.
I thought that there was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars received from Peter Welch.
That's old, that's old news, and that's been used in this building.
But that was specific for upstairs?
It was specific to, it was specific to augment the grant we got to fix this building, so it was used there.
The community center upstairs.
It was used there, yeah. No, it wasn't that specific, it was a, it was a add-on to the grant. So thank you. Anything else?
That discussion ended, and those comments ended very abruptly, so next meeting I'll bring in the application that Mr. Gunter signed, specific for upstairs.
Upstairs, what's the difference, well, never mind, do what you gotta do.
That'll be continued.
Do what you gotta do, thank you.
Will do.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to say, I really, I, the suggestion that Josh Marky had to put a handicap spot across from Liberty, I think that's a marvelous idea.
It's probably, probably something we should do anyways, but I'm not, I don't know.
It really kind of solves issues that...
Well, it solves a lot of problems.
Yes.
Yeah, and still keeps parking.
And lets these people be happy.
I think if we were to do anything, we might want to put it out there first, and see what kind of response we get, because yes, it does sound like a great idea, but I think we've been met with resistance to some great ideas in the past. And so I'd be hesitant to just sign off on the ordinance with that, I think we need to have more conversation. But I do agree, it is a great idea.
Talk that one some more.
My thought on handicap, handicap's a great idea, but if you have a handicap here for one side of the road, you should have one on the other side for the other businesses. If people, a handicap is not gonna park and walk across the road as good as they would park in front and walk in, and then you get too many handicaps, the other people don't have access without taking a chance on getting tickets.
Maybe the idea...
So, you know, I don't disagree with a handicap, but not exactly sure where it should be.
I'm thinking that we should have the business owners from that street.
But point of order, this is five minutes for public comment and not for discussion, if we're gonna discuss something like that, it needs to be, it needs to be an agenda item.
It's a legitimate talk, I mean, but it's true, we'd have to do a little more research on where and how parking, handicaps would have to be, that's for sure. And there are people that will be more than happy to do that from the state, if we ask.
Just a quick little side note to tack on to that, would it be feasible to station an officer down there for an hour or two during the heavier hours?
It's, I'm not gonna answer, I'm not gonna answer that, it's kind of, it's a little bit off what we're talking about, and the police are down there and they check parking at this point, and we'll talk to them about...
Just like traffic surveillance or something like that, not like, uh, tagging tires or anything like that, but just, just a presence.
Presence, there's, yeah, it's a possibility. Any other five-minute comments? Okay. Department head report, hey, a new department head, you get to report first. Are we talking to you later, or, yeah, the pump stage upgrade, you wanna wait for that? You wanna wait? Okay. All right. Chief?
Last two weeks, we've had two arrests, one for Outrider, one was content, which referenced a stolen car, stolen from West Street, recovered in Rattle over the month, and we had a DUI arrest over the weekend. Last two weeks, we had sixty-seven traffic tickets, twenty-seven mornings, we had three car crashes, twenty-two sets of fingerprints. I gave you a brief overview of the highlights, obviously I don't put every ticket on there, but I tried to pick twenty or over, I tried to, so you have a kind of good idea. Couple good ones, a sixty-three and a forty, really a couple high ones, and they were like South Main Street, and we've been trying to focus there pretty heavy.
Which I appreciate.
We had a hundred and seventy-six calls for service in the last two weeks, and we're at twenty-seven for an iron for... The only thing that I wanted to address was the personal complaint, about Ms. Phillips. The academy reviewed that, they reviewed it thirty-seven seconds, I was at their house, and they found there was no professional conduct, she's been notified about that. They did not accept their complaint. In a nutshell, the landlord said he can deliver this handwritten letter, it's the first civil process for issues they had with her as tenant. I walked up, knocked on the door, she answered the door, I said, civil process, handed it to her, I turned, I said, what's this garbage? She said, what? And she went back in the house. I had the body cam, somebody wants to look at it, but again, they didn't accept the complaint.
Thank you.
Thanks. Were the, just out of curiosity, the crashes, were there's any similarities or similar same spots, or?
No, no. And I will have that heat map for you soon, because they're looking at doing the new highway safety grant, and I have the heat map, and I have it, and I just, I forgot to bring it in. So you can see the relationship where our heavy crashes are.
Okay. Just want to get an air in the water for, that if you get extra money through a safety grant or something here, that sign on Capitol Hill that flashes and says, I think is working fantastic, would love to see one on Dutton Avenue, South Main, and West Street, if we ever get the money.
I have one, it's not, I have one that we bought, it's about six months ago, I've not been able to get EPW and ourselves to coordinate, put it up, I was actually looking at, put it on Forest Street where the thirty mile an hour sign is.
Even that's short.
And then I just actually ordered another one, it's in the warrant pair, and that would be a placement, I was thinking maybe Capitol Hill coming down the hill, but haven't decided where we would do that next one.
Is that one that's going programmable?
It'd be identical to the one that's at Josh Marky's house. We will have three of them, and they can be moved, if we want to move them around town.
Well, my, why I ask is, I've been in towns where, when you go under the speed limit, it says thank you.
Yeah, we can put it out there, and...
This goes from red to green.
Programmed it, Michael and Paul, and they had thank you, and had slowed down.
You know, yeah, it says, slow down if you're going too fast, and thank you if you're going the speed limit.
But it sounds like you're all over.
Yep, so with the highway safety money, equipment grant, we had four thousand dollars, that was thirty-eight hundred, I have a couple hundred dollars donated by a flashlight for a lot of cars to upgrade LED, so that is in your warrant tonight, I did forget to bring that, thanks for reminding me. So we will have three, so the goal is to get the other one out, with coordination of EPW and programming it, and then find a location, again, I was looking at Forest Street going this way, you'd have the twenty-five, and we'd actually put where the thirty is, that can end that confusion going across, and then target where we work together, where we want the accident.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Start with some communications, ask me, the labor union, they sent over a letter saying it's time to start bargaining again for that, for our labor negotiations, so that's coming up, I will work with them to schedule some dates. Chief, are you still there?
Yeah.
You want to talk about Mr. Duel? Tyler?
Oh, yeah, if you want to read it. Our new officer just started...
Yeah, so we got a compliment from our new officer, I'll read it out. This gentleman says, I unfortunately was hit by a deer a mile from the New York border, and your officer Duel went above and beyond the call of duty. He had problems with, we had problems with AAA and towing, but your officer stayed with us to make sure we were okay and got it towed. We could not get it towed to New York, even though we were less than one mile from the state line. After an hour and a half, Mr. Duel, Officer Duel, used his contacts to help us, he can't say enough, this gentleman can't say enough, Officer Duel is a jewel and a keeper. After forty-five years in law enforcement, it's refreshing to see such a caring and professional officer. His hat is off to him, and he thanks the officer in the town of Fairhaven.
Good to hear that every once in a while.
Okay, a little bit from Public Works, fall grading and mowing is in process, they should be wrapping up mowing sometime this week. I know South Main, that still need, did they get it this morning?
I don't think so. South Main needs to, needs mowing.
Yep, so they're gonna hit that. The sidewalks, so the sidewalk in front of Memorial Park, that project will start Monday morning. We're gonna notify Facebook and let folks know that...
What are you gonna do there?
We're gonna replace the sidewalk, in front of Memorial.
I suppose you're not gonna put slate there, huh?
Cement, like our ordinance says.
You're an old codger.
We'll talk about that ordinance.
Rules follow the rules.
Sometimes the rules were made to be broken, especially when history is involved.
No.
Okay, never mind.
Monday.
And they're holding...
I'm sure you hear that.
And they're holding that off so they're not to Monday after Apple Fest, so you don't have it all.
Yeah, we're not gonna tear it up during...
Tear it up before Apple Fest.
We are gonna have to have intermittent, intermittent lane closures over there, so if you're coming north on Main and you want to make that left, that's gonna be shut down periodically. We will notify folks about that, starting tomorrow, we're gonna keep the reminders going. going to keep the reminders going. Uh, the new backhoe should get here at the end of this month. And I have a lot today, guys. Uh, I hate to take up so much time. The Scott Hill project, that will start at the end of this month. We got our wetland permit, um, so that's, that's moving. Uh, the water department, they didn't get as many valve exercises, they're exercising the valves out on the roads. They didn't get as many as they wanted to this year, but they're still working at it, just as a heads up. Um, and the, this is the last, the 2024 audit is the last audit under our current contract, so I just released an audit for the RF, an RFP for the audit firm. So we should have those numbers in now that we're moving into budget season. We'll meet those numbers, you know, in the next few months.
When's the due date for the, for the proposals to come in?
November 1st.
Okay.
Yeah, that gives us time. Uh, speaking of budget, the spreadsheet did go live, uh, and staff are entering numbers into the budget now. The board will get their first, their first look on, at the next meeting. It feels like we just did this. Um, the Big Little Hill Stormwater Project is done. Um, we had a little bit of money left over in the paving budget, so we are going to pave that small stretch. Um, I kicked around the idea of not paving it, but, but it is, uh, I mean, where we put those culverts and the road was alligator cracked anyway, so we're going to, we're going to shim it and then, so that's getting done. I think it is 14,000 and change for that project. Uh, we're closing out the parking lot, uh, parking ride and parking light proj, parking ride and park light project. Um, we think we have one more invoice coming in. Uh, Chief's not there, but he did order the carpet for the police department. Uh, the petition for 16, 18 River Street did fail, so the lawyer is closing in, closing on that sale. Proposals are in for the Skyline Study. If you remember, the, they came in and we talked about a, a grant, we got a grant for that. Um, I'm reviewing the proposals now, and I'm going to meet with the other gentleman from Peter Schneider that came in and talked about this. We're going to sit together and go over the proposals and, and, and score them. Uh, security contractor, he'll start on 10/14, which is Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, but still, he's going to go to the school first, and then he's going to come here and get as much done as he can. He'll start in the clerk's office, so that ways not to disturb staff while, um, while they're there. Uh, while he's here, we are going to pull cable for the second floor for, um, internet and cable. So it will be cable and internet, we'll be phone and internet ready upstairs on the 15th, 16th. Uh, we're doing some trainings this year, in case, uh, anybody wanted to come, we're going to do sexual harassment and First Amendment audit trainings. Thank you to VLC, BLCT for helping us out with those. Uh, the trucks have been oil undercoated, that was something we do annually to preserve our equipment, so that's done. If anybody knows a painter, I have been unable to find somebody to paint and repair the paint, the, um, stuff that's on this building. I've asked everybody I know. I've put ads in the newspaper.
He must be a little Jim Rucker.
I know, um, everyone knows that one of the Whitmans do painting in the summers and part-time.
If, if you can send them to me.
Yeah.
Mike Stanner does it on, on, in the summertime as well.
Yeah, maybe Mike. I didn't ask him.
I don't know, I don't know how much you repair and soften.
Mark Van Buren, too, I think does painting on the side, too, I think, down Holy.
Yeah, if you know anybody. I'll, I'll touch base tomorrow, and we'll get some names. Yeah, it's, it's just, it needs to be done. The, the town allocated 50,000 two years ago for this.
And we haven't been able to.
I have been unable to find a contractor. It's just, it's a pain in the butt to get way up there.
So, it's also tough to get a contractor, no matter what you're doing.
Yeah.
Trust me, I know. One day job, I can't find it, but.
I think that's all I have for you.
Sure.
Just one question, when you're, when we pave up where the water was getting in the, the road, those potholes are getting pretty bad on Scott Hill. Could we get a little?
Yep, that's on the schedule.
Okay, perfect.
I got, I got one comment, too, about your report. You say mowing was wrapping up. We should never wrap up mowing, we should mow as long as we can, whenever we get a chance. Keep that brush back. It's very important.
Right, you can do that up until smell flies.
And beyond.
Anything else? All right, let's move on. MOU with the town. Before, before we start, I would like to point out the irony of this. We are, we are spending thousands of dollars of lawyer's fees to negotiate with ourselves. This is ridiculous. But I get why we're doing it, unfortunately. This is like, we're voters against voters, and we're all the same voters. It's ridiculous. So, go ahead.
So, so this is, um, this is the updated version of, I don't know if I want to say updated version, but this is our version of what was sent over from the school. Um, it's a little bit more, it's a bit more fair when it comes to liability, as opposed to just dumping everything right out to the town fairhaven, so.
Were we going to?
We are.
Put that up?
I'm going to put this up on the screen, if anybody has, um, suggestions we can make.
I got one.
Constructive criticism.
Would it be on page three?
It's on, uh, number, number eight on page three.
I'll let you talk.
No, no, I.
Go ahead.
I, I got a good solution. I want to propose for that, number eight on page three as well.
Let's start, let's start at the top and get, get to that, okay?
Okay.
Anybody who wants to jump in and add, add their comments or their suggestions, go right ahead. Anybody have anything on the first page?
Only that, that, uh, the school originally started asking for a memorandum of understanding. We, my understanding is, we talked to our attorney, and they wanted to change it to in, uh, it's a property license agreement and a memorandum of understanding, but it's, they put the property license, that's a big difference between a memorandum of understanding and a property license agreement, just.
Only to a lawyer.
Right, but, well.
Or a couple lawyers.
Yeah, that, uh.
Go ahead.
That's, that's the first one we saw.
Yeah.
The rest of it on page one. Look to K. Insert. There's some information you got to fill in, the address of the thing, but it was, page one, pretty good.
It's just letting us know what, what we're talking about and maybe where the players are.
Who the, who the players are, and it was just, just formal stuff, where. Page two is where I thought the discussion would be. Uh, number two, when we're talking about how long this license agreement slash memorandum would take place. So, if we can scroll, let's start on page two. Number two on top, where it looks like it was going to be forever to, or 24, it could be any period of time, and more, the discussion is, is probably every year, you don't want to fill one of these things out.
Probably not every 10 years.
But is this a, but is, well, but, but is this because it's something new? Is this a three or a five year? I, or do you, what, it's more, it's what, I'm not locked into any particular time, but I'm saying we have to come up with, how long do you think this agreement, before it gets looked at, to see if it needs to be tweaked or whatever?
Depends on the terms of revocation, I would think. Well, a three year, five year, 10 year. If we, if we can get out of a bad deal, that's the.
We get, we can get out of it with six months or what it was.
Yeah, there's a get out.
Three, yeah, termination, 30 days notice.
30 days notice to get out of it.
I, I personally would like to go as long as we can.
Yeah.
You know, I.
Would, would give us, throw something out there, so that.
Ten years.
Ten years.
10 years?
Ten years.
Can we put 10 years in? See, see, I want to get this close enough so we can pop it out to them and say, this is what we want, now, now have your attorney look at it, and.
Spend some more of our.
Spend some more money. Yeah.
Yeah, this seems, uh, more than a MOU.
It's definitely, it's definitely more than a.
This is, looks like.
Definitely more than a MOU.
Yeah, this is.
I, I had nothing else on page two. Page three, number eight, there's quite a few lines I'd like to see deleted.
I, I think there needs to be some verbiage that allows access to the public at every time, um, or at any time.
Right, I mean, the earlier language was great, talking about unrestricted access, and then under number eight restricts it right down to September to June during the school hours, which.
Yeah, there's.
I, I thought that you could take that, quite frankly, and about, when you get down to the first paragraph, and you delete after the, the sentence that, you delete, when the license is, when the licensee is not in session and outside of the licensee's normal hours of operation, just delete that, put a period at, at the end of playing, playing field. And then you go to almost the last paragraph, where it talks about down here, a key and all that good stuff, and deleting everything from by a gate. From here on, delete that and put a period.
Where's your, where's your first deletion?
The first deletion is up, uh, where it's in, it's in this line right here, and the start, the deletion starts at when the licensee, so when it says.
Take all that out.
Take, take all that out.
Is that one sentence, or how far down?
You end, you end, end at the end of the sentence, opera, at the end, operation.
All right, I'm just going to, I'm going to strike through and then.
That's, that's what I did on my cop, is I did a strike through to just say, that right there needs to go, and the bottom part needs to go, and then I can live with number eight.
The last paragraph, the licensee acknowledges?
Yep.
With that, though.
Well, actually, above that, by a gate. Starts right here, right there.
That whole deal.
Yep.
I think there should be some acknowledgement that, uh, uh, this property under this understanding kind of falls subject to, uh, rules of school grounds in terms of conduct.
I, I would want to see what that is, because I'm not comfortable that we would, uh, we would be in agreement. That's why, where I can live with a period here, where it says, where applicable. That's the general get out of jail, if you've got something you want to talk about that would, that the school feels they can't do in their roles, that gives us room to work out something that works for both.
We're still, we're still not letting, um, regular folk on, if, at that.
Well, will we take those out? Regular folks?
No, licensee acknowledges active personnel persons under the licensee's supervision. License acknowledges that the, the license, the license premises while in.
Are allowed access, and use the licensed premises as a playground, a playing field. We, we are letting.
It says the licensee will be limited to students, personnel, to the licensed premises.
But that's.
While in use will be limited to students, personnel, and others under the direct supervision of the licensee. I, I, I can't live with that.
Okay.
There's, there's, um.
I don't think that's fair.
No, there's people that use that as a daycare.
Okay, then, then what would you recommend, striking out?
That part of it as well. I, I do not want to cede the playgrounds to the school for the entire school year, is, is the basic. My, my, my premise, and that's all.
I, I agree.
I think we keep the reimbursement piece if they damage property, but take out the rest.
So you're going to take licensing damages access licensed premises, while and use license will be limited to students?
This is saying, if you change licensee to school, let's just, let's just use that word. The school will be limited to students, personnel, and others under the direct supervision of the school.
It doesn't stop anybody.
It doesn't stop the public from getting.
Exactly. I'm thinking, I'm thinking there are kids out there going to school shooting hoops, but other folks want to pay, play pickleball, and it's all that same set of courts?
Because we're the licenser, we're the licenser.
The licenser, the school's the licensee.
Yeah.
So I don't.
We're just, we're just saying their people has to be under, have to be under some type of direct supervision.
No, I, I'm reading licenser acknowledges that access to the licensed premises while in use by the licensee will be limited to students, personnel, and others under direct supervision.
Then we want to make that clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we got to get rid of that. Got it.
Because absolutely, they can be out there and people can have their child at the playground.
Yeah, because there are a lot of people. Pickleball courts get up and running, people want to go play pickleball.
So we want to whack that whole thing right there like that?
Right.
Yep.
Any reference to the school being the, the school and their, and their, um, citizens being the only people that can be on the playgrounds has got to go.
Right.
Or I won't support it myself.
No, no, I, I don't disagree with you at all. And when they talk about the key and the locking of the gate, just so when I deleted all that right there, my thought was, I don't want to give, keep, have the school responsible for locking and unlocking at, I hear, we have, we have, um, the ability, why wouldn't we as a town, and even I, the chief's not here, so I, I, I'm just saying, it's a great opportunity to say, you know, lock it, that, our, our police department, when they're making, make sure that I, we have a presence that goes down twice a day, to unlock in the morning whoever's on the first shift, and to lock it whoever's working second shift at nine o'clock. It puts a presence there, why wouldn't, and it takes less than five minutes. Why wouldn't we deal with it that way?
And if they're not, if they're not, if they don't have anybody on at seven o'clock, then one of our guys from the town can just run down there and unlock. I, I think that's, I think it's, it keeps our, our hand in the, in the pot, and we, we're looking at our.
Because I understand, I don't want to sound totally negative towards the school, because I understand they're concerned about the health, welfare, safety of the students, just like we all are. And, but I think this, there's a way where everybody.
It's a community park, and we, we can't, we can't allow one section of the, of the town to be in control, you know, sole arbiter of what happens nine months of the year.
And then, there was page four, I didn't have any, I, I'm, with those changes right there, because we're saying, it doesn't have to take forever to resolve this. Take and, and clean this up, and if you want a final version sent to before, but I'd just say, I would, I would even say, um, I have no problem with giving it to the school to say, can you live with it?
Before we jump to page four.
Yep.
Uh, under number 10, the non-exclusive use.
Mm-hmm.
Shall not impair the way of licenser's rights or ability to allow, uh, use of the licensed premises while the licenser is not in session and outside of hours of normal school operation.
Did that shit up, or did that backwards?
I think we need to, well, I think we need to remove that, because that's additional language that.
We don't need, because the licenser is, right. Good, good catch there, 10.
I, I, under, uh, third line after licensed premises, uh, I would remove the rest and simply add, uh, it will not impair our writer ability to allow use of the licensed premises to other entities.
You want two other entities sitting in this space right here?
Yeah. Because we want to be able to allow any, any other entity we want to use.
There might be a, a flag football game, or, uh, a, something, the Vipers might come over and, I, I, if something were, yeah, you want that ability to.
Yeah.
To do those kinds of things, sure. In those fields. In those fields. Anyone have anything else?
I do not.
I, I, I mean, Mike, I, I would be happy if this was a lot less formal. Than what we're making, we're making this with the, with the adjectives and just saying, hey, look, here's, here's what we're going to do.
Should be a one paragraph MOU.
Right, and, and, and sure, it didn't, to get into this level of discussion. Just sends the wrong thing that we don't, nobody trusts anybody. And, and that's not a, not, not.
All, all lawyers involved. I just want to make sure that anybody can go down and use pickleballs, walk whatever they want to do during the day.
Push their child in the swing, do whatever, right, uh, that's, shoot some hoops.
People used to love to go up and walk the track at the high school, and they can't do that anymore.
Right.
In my opinion, that's not right, but we're all taxpayers of this town.
Okay, there will be some, a little language under security cameras.
Yep.
That needs to change. I forget what, what the lang, I forget what the acronym is, but it's. Um, during school hours, if there's video cameras down there, we're taping children. There's legalities around that, especially if, say, there's a bullying incident.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want to just have somebody come in and say, hey, I want to see your video, these kids fighting.
You need the right language to protect the privacy of.
Yeah, we need privacy language, and we're, and you're gonna see that popping up in um. Yeah, we have a lot of cameras going in, so we're gonna update our policy. Around that, and then this will have to have some language too, so.
Yeah.
Um, you'll see that coming through in the next few weeks, months.
Okay, did that get you where you need to be?
Yes.
Cool.
Great, moving right along. Signing the reappraisal order. Now?
Do we have to?
Gateless lane no longer exists.
So this is, we talked a couple, a couple of weeks ago, a couple meetings ago, about the state sending us a letter saying, hey, you need to reappraise your town. Um, I didn't realize there was actually a spot to sign that, send it back to them, so.
Is that the chair to sign?
There's only one spot, and it says.
What exactly does it say?
This is, this is them telling us that we've reached that threshold, um, and that we now need to.
I didn't know we did. I thought we were still a couple of points off.
They, using their new way of weighting, they, uh, our, our CLA was, was good. But another one that they just plugged in up in Montpelier, put us out by two tenths of a percent. And um, so, so what, all this. All, Bob will, will sign this?
Yes, and then I'll get it back.
Do you need any kind of motion or anything to sign that?
I ain't signing it without a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to sign that we received the reappraisal. Direction from Montpelier and, and, and we'll have the chair, Mr. Richards, sign it.
I'll second that motion and.
You're both out of order. I'll, I'll see you later.
Did, did we, did we get a second so I can add a comment? And, and my, my only comment like that would be, okay, so where are we, if I was looking at the minutes or watching on BetTV, I'd be saying, so what does that mean? And hopefully, correct me if I'm wrong, that means our listeners are putting a request together for seeing what it's going to cost and everything, and. So we'll, we'll know what it's going to cost, then we'll go, make a decision to, to go out and try to get someone, and we'll get put on this list. Reappraisal could be years away because of the number and the fact that we're out by point two tenths of a percent. On something new that just went in, that could change again.
Well, that twenty percent.
Be rushing.
That twenty percent has been around for a long time. I think that what's changed is how they, how they calculate that twenty percent. Because we've been, we've been well over a hundred percent for a very long time. We've dodged this bullet for a long time.
They, they explained to me it had something to do with the equalized weighting of students, and that changed the way that calculation was.
So, yeah, okay, is there, everybody understand what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? This is our response, so, anybody want to respond?
But yeah, what, what, what happened if a town refused?
Uh, you would lose any, if you happen to not be a gold town, you would lose any um.
State aid.
State aid.
Finance.
Right, and all that good stuff.
It would make everything ugly.
I think they could make life miserable for, we, we, we want to play nice. We, we, we want to play nice, we really do.
The, the reappraisal. It's always scary and it, it goes by the, by the one-third. One-third will go up, one-third will go down, and one-third will stay the same, and that's been, the two reappraisals I've been familiar with, that's what's happened. But it's still a royal pain and it's expensive.
Very expensive.
And it's uh, and nobody's happy, and be prepared, when the border civil authority gets their appeals, instead of two or three, there's fifty.
You'll be living, you'll be living on appeals, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a long, ugly. Fun endgame, if that encourages to stay on board even longer. Anyways, okay, enough of that. Budget expectations for new business?
Yes, so this is, this is my annual uh, what's the board looking for? And not only in terms of uh increase or decrease of your budget, um, but where do we want to focus our time and, our, our time and money? Uh, we could say, it's easy to say, well, I have a three percent increase. But that could be a twelve percent increase in, you know, municipal building and a significant reduction everywhere else. So I guess I'm looking for guidance, what's your increase and where do you really want to focus, focus your, your time and effort?
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks is a big one, it's the thing, biggest complaint that I've seen recently is even just resurfacing them, there's been all. And I was gonna bring that up later, but sidewalks and I'd say paving, you know.
You want areas not.
Nope, I need, I need a percent increase.
Because, because I, I was gonna say, I come back and say, before I start talking about what? I don't want any increase, I want a level budget, it's what I want, that's, now, and I, after. Now, as a taxpayer, that's what I want. Now that said, realistically speaking. What I'm thinking, and yet I could be all wet, I've had people tell me that many times. Not to exceed three percent, for a budget that passed by three votes and less than twenty, the, two years before that. I, I'm telling you that I, I'm, I wouldn't want to exceed three percent. Also, I'd want us to entertain a way that, I don't want each department going out trying to put a budget together at three percent. Because that doesn't give us any room, we don't, oh, we didn't put anything in our reserves for a few years and everything. I'd rather give the departments a goal of less than three percent. So that we as the board and Joe have some wiggle room for putting money in reserve funds and, or things that you, we, we just got to have. The list you were trying to make, like sidewalks and paving, well, it's okay to say that those are there, but where's the mon, show me the money. To me, I'd, I'd go tell, uh, I'd, I'd start it saying, put me a budget together, departments on two and a half percent. And that gives us a half a percent to work with, that doesn't mean they don't get three percent. Like, for example, I'm looking at Carrie, she's saying, Glenn, you're mad, but I, and, and I probably, and I, and I probably, no, but I look at the sewer. I'm saying, you put a budget together for two and a half percent. And she comes in and says, these manhole covers that I keep telling you about, we got to do something about, or this other thing. It gives us a half a percent of, of putting it, to bring it to three. That, that's just my.
I agree with mine.
So if you let me know what your goals are for those reserves, I can actually do that ahead of time.
You're the numbers guy.
Wait, no, no, you can, but I'm saying, usually, I don't have any goals for those reserves until I hear your department heads come in here. And build their case. I, I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want you going telling them what, what, what's important to them. I want them coming to you saying, this is what's important to us. And then, so I, that's, I don't want to give you those areas to concentrate on. I want to keep the half a percent to, to after I hear. And we ask clarifying questions and, and you'll usually push back and, and will, and, and do a good job of keeping us in line. But, but I, I, just sitting here and throwing out stuff without, without talking to those department heads, I, I don't know.
Let me give you an example of why I ask, where do we want to target, right?
Mm-hmm.
Cause we're gonna get six or eight months into the budget. And I'm gonna hear, I got an enormous tree we need to cut down, it's only gonna cost you eleven thousand dollars. I don't have eleven thousand dollars not spent. I have two trees that I now need to cut, and my budget has been blown on one tree. So then we say, well, it's now, it's, this is a dire need, we need to cut these trees down, this is only six thousand dollars. Now I'm in a deficit of six thousand dollars. Oh, we just had, we just had a storm drain fail, now I'm in a deficit of another five thousand dollars, right, so. It, it's easy to say we don't want to, but when those things pop up, like eleven thousand dollar tree. We're gonna have to restrain ourselves and say, well, we didn't budget for that. Cause I can't find, it's, it's easy to say, go find money, but you can't, I can't find money, this is where my money comes from, as you gentlemen sitting here. So, that's what I say, it's, it's where you want to set your money, let's focus on that.
Which means that you and your department heads have to make the case for that. I think three percent is unrealistic, because that's a, that's the going rate of inflation, so you're asking, you're asking for a level fund. At three percent, if you just increase the three percent.
Zero percent is a level fund.
No, it is not.
I, I'm, again, I'm, I'm saying.
Think about it, think about math.
I, I'm telling you, if we do anything more than three percent. I'll be shocked if our budget gets passed this year. And I, and I probably wouldn't vote for it either.
Well.
Just so you understand that, but, but you go right ahead.
But I don't, I don't understand, first of all, three percent is level fund.
Let them come back with the three percent. We might sit here and decide that things are so critical, to the part again, what you're talking about. They're so critical that we got to do it, if you don't have the money, and it goes to something higher than three percent. But I can guarantee you, if you don't put that three percent out there, we'll be coming in at nine, fighting our way back to six. And going, oh, well, this is what we need. Well, if you want your budget voted down, go right ahead and put that out there, and see what you're gonna do. At a, at a group of people that have been taxed right to get already in this state.
Your goal for a budget is to get it passed rather than to do what the town needs.
For the budget is no, no different than at my home, I only have so much money. I don't dream up other stuff and go try to take money from everyone else, I live to my means. This year's gonna be tough, and we need to live to our means.
No question it's gonna be tough this year, because the schools are already talking about it a lot.
A double-digit increase possible.
Once again, we can't budget to offset the schools.
I under, I understand that, but it all enters into the big picture.
I believe three percent, what we do is we disagree to disagree. I, I feel three percent is a reasonable, and we can do it. Now, come back and let the department heads and Joe come back and show me how we can, but I believe it's doable.
Well, it's level fund.
I, I think, uh, I think we should shoot for it and try our best. I hate level funding, because down the road, it don't work.
Level funding, one thing we should all understand, that level funding this year means. We do exactly what we did with the reserve accounts that we did last year.
Yep, that's what will happen.
That's exact, which was nothing.
Weren't there some capital purchases, though, that?
We made some major, everyone was talking like we're, like we're, we're starving, we bought a lot of brand-new equipment, we, we did a lot of stuff. You look around town, we're doing a lot of things.
We are.
We are not letting the critical stuff go by.
That was a ten percent increase.
We are not letting, and, and I'm just saying, it's. You can't just keep spending, that's what's going on in Montpelier, that's what's, that's what's happening in our. And I know I'm probably gonna get myself in trouble by saying, in our school budget, we just keep spending, spending, spending. There's a point where you have to say, enough. We can't afford anymore, and let's live with what we can afford, and that may mean there's some things that, don't get that, now, when I say three percent. If someone comes in and says they can't get to three percent, I know how to get to three percent with one less person, who's paying benefits is a big, is a big chunk. You can get, you can get to three percent, there's a lot of different ways you can get there. So I, there's, this thing of saying we can't do that, no, we can.
You won't have the increase of his salary this year. You won't have that, the, that massive increase of forty or fifty thousand dollars, or sixty thousand, whatever we put in for. You don't have that as an increase this year, so that'll be a little easier to, to swallow, you know what I'm saying? So, there's that, but, but the. Let's, I mean, I'm willing to try that.
I, I, no, no, I'm, I'm just trying to tell you, we can have the co, the tougher discussions now. Or we can get our budget voted down and come back and have the dis, the tough discussions after. Either way, we're gonna have them, and I'd rather have them now.
What I, what I want is that when people come in and say, my, my road needs work, or my sidewalk needs to work. And we have decided we're not going to do that, I'm going to lean over to you and say, and say, explain why we had to go with three percent.
The same people that are screaming the taxes are too high, now there's another, there's another approach, you can. That's been floated out there, that says, you get something that you feel you absolutely need to have. And by the way, I look at sidewalks, and they're not the top priority for me at all. They're not an absolute gotta-have. There's other things like roads, ditches, there, there, there's, there's things that are gotta-haves. But if you really feel that way and want to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on sidewalks, put it right on the ballot in March. And let the voters say, rate, that are complaining that my taxes are too high, let them say, I'm willing to pay higher taxes for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a sidewalk. By the way, I'd be shocked if they did, but if they want to, that's fine. I, I, the, they've, we've done everything in our power, we control what we can control.
We do, we could do it like Castleland does, and let, let them vote on every line item, I would hate.
I, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying that there are gonna be some things that, if you've got something that you feel is that important. And it's a big dollar item, don't try to put it, I'm, I think.
That's what we're here for.
We're here, we're here to keep within our means, and I think you got to spend within your means. I, I think that three percent is reasonable.
Okay.
That's just me.
Anybody else? We, we, we're starting to repeat ourselves, us two are.
I, it's a reasonable starting point, right, and then we see what we're missing, if there's anything critical we need to add, uh, if there's any wiggle room. You know, I, I think we'll find more wiggle room this year, uh, than, than years past, but we shall see.
Okay.
I agree with Chad. I think, I think it's a great starting point.
We're spending less on fuel. Things are, things are.
Mike? My first budget thing, so I mean, I just kind of take it all. But, no, I mean.
You're gonna love it.
Right. But, you know, to your point, there has been a lot of complaints about the sidewalks in town, and that seems to be important, so. I mean, it surprises me, every year I go to vote, you'd think it's not going to, and people do, they vote for it, so. What might not be a concern to you might be.
Might be the major item for people out there.
So.
I, I think we should, I think we ought to do some sidewalk every year, the worst of the worst every year.
Right.
That's, we gotta just keep stabbing away and getting things done.
Right, cause you don't want to turn to another Scotch hill, you know, we get to the point where it costs more.
That's correct, we gotta, we gotta spend more on our infrastructure.
That's the stuff people notice the most, and harp the most about is that we don't put money into that stuff.
So the, uh, to Glenn's point about putting it on the, uh, something on a warrant, right? So the operating budget is literally that, is our budget to operate, it may not be a, a capital expenditure like sidewalks or a different road to pave. So it, from my perspective, adding a large, like, chunk of money for sidewalk, that's not operating necessarily, that's. An enormous capital expenditure. Um, it seems to me to jive that way, I know different towns do differently, but that's, that's kind of how I see it too. It's, it's, it's larger. It's, it's, it's larger than just maintenance.
Well, that's our, that's our target goal and-
Three percent, we like sidewalks?
We like sidewalks.
Okay.
But we, it's, what I would suggest to your department heads is be ready, you've got a little bit longer time. But, uh, be ready for the hard sell. They're gonna have to sell it and they're gonna have to be schooled. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Pump station.
Home station.
Finally gonna get to.
Right, on that, well.
Yeah, we're all ready for you now.
Um, before I start on this, I just wanted to tell you that, uh, we got that digitization project done. You guys had approved. And we're actually gonna test it out in October when we do our line flushing. So we're gonna, um, actually print out the map and we're gonna do a lot of investigative work so that we have that. We're gonna pop manholes while we're, I mean, obviously we're popping manholes when we're flushing, but we're actually gonna take that whole digital plan that we have and start making a plan, um, exactly what manhole needs to be addressed, which lines need to be addressed.
Any surprises when you're out looking? That's when you're mapping water and-
It was a huge educational experience because to, cause we ended up blocking like most of the town. So it was, it was, I learned a lot about our system. So it was, it was really fun. So a couple of weeks ago, uh, I lost, this is the welcome center, um, we're having problems with that pump station. Couple of weeks ago, I lost a capacitor in it, which wasn't a big deal, uh, except for the next day the pump went. Um, and I have a feeling that, uh, after doing some investigation, the pump probably went because the panel needs replacing. That panel was installed in nineteen ninety-nine, so it's twenty-five years old now. And it has been getting some moisture in there. And when we tested out the other pump, the breakers aren't dripping in it. Um.
No, no, listening.
Oh.
That was a little concern.
Yeah, so, um, right now we're down one pump. We thought maybe we could rebuild it, but we can't. It's the motor that shot on it. It's, it's not gonna be rebuilt. So what you have before you is a quote from PSI, one from A1 SOR and one from Champlin. Uh, A1 did not give me a quote on the panel yet. Um, but I do, I put them actually in order of past. So your lowest one's on top.
Are you familiar with these guys?
PSI is the one that did our last two pump stations. So very familiar. They did, um, the upgraded panel on Academy Street and Adam Street.
So is that your recommendation, this from PSI?
Yeah, they're, um, they know our pump stations. They know our plants now. They come at the drop of a hat. I mean, they're coming from New Hampshire. I called them for a quote on Monday. They were there on Tuesday.
And I can, on Kerry's side, they're in wastewater and water. There are a lot of companies out there that do this stuff. So pretty much what you see is what you hear.
And, um, when I actually put this quote together, I put it in for the cheapest panel possible. We actually, we even took out the outlets in there. So this is stripped down, just a panel to get us by.
Do we have the money?
In our capital limit. We put twenty thousand in last year. So it's gonna take that.
Hey, that's why, that's why you put that in.
We do it. Remember that, guys.
So we have one more, um, to keep in mind for, we have one more pump station that's gonna need some updating and that's the one up at the guard shack.
What does this pump station serve?
The welcome center.
The welcome center.
There's good foot traffic through there.
We, we took that over.
We took it over. When we took it over, we should have had some sort of agreement for maintenance on it. Um, that was past people. We can't fix it. We just have to deal with it. It's ours. We own it. We gotta fix it.
Why did we do that?
I, I don't know, Bob. Why, why did we do that?
I don't know. I, I don't know what the, what the, uh-
There should have been some sort of maintenance agreement.
Many years ago, right?
Oh, I don't even remember when it was.
When the welcome center was.
Yeah.
But then again, I don't remember yesterday.
And just, um, so you know, the two pumps that were installed in there, they were installed in nineteen, in two thousand nineteen. So the panel probably should have been addressed then. Um, and I don't wanna repeat that. I mean, pumps are obviously extremely expensive. So.
So that, you're thinking, okay.
I don't really see any point in replacing the pump without doing the panel. And I can't run my pump. It's only on our time.
Hopefully we're gonna go another year before we have to replace the guard station one?
I'm hoping. Um, this, last week, we actually went through, we pulled all the grease out of them, um, we pulled all the fluids, we deragged everything. Um, this one's gonna be cleaned again, um, before they get down in there and work on it, but we can do that ourselves. Don't have a deal.
Looking for a motion? I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the bid from PSI for what was total?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, uh, is that, is that fif- uh, fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars?
Yep, and there's one, one note to that though. Um, we are gonna have to use our Vermont electrician. So the final connection is gonna have to be made by our Vermont electrician because they're a construction company and they do not have a Vermont license. So. But it's still way below any other ones. We can do that. So it might exceed.
Might exceed. Okay. Well, what's the, what's the amount that you're comfortable, what's our Vermont electrician gonna cost us? Give us, give us the-
Means you're gonna charge more than a hundred bucks to just put up some noise?
I would tackle, I would tackle it with a grand on that.
Let me modify my motion. I'll make a motion to accept the bid from PSI uh, for total installation, not to exceed sixteen thousand.
I'll second that. Questions, comments? All those in favor?
All right. Thank you for being patient.
I, I would need a motion for that money to come out of the wastewater.
I'll make a motion to take the sixteen thousand out of the wastewater capital fund?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Those opposed?
I'm knocking on my door.
Chad.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anything else for us, as long as you're here?
Um, we're loving this warm weather that's holding out. Um, we're taking stuff down, cleaning it. Um.
Cool.
Shaden actually and I pressure washed the entire contract chamber today. It's looking all nice and shiny. So we're just dizzy.
Good.
That's good, that's good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
Thanks again for that crane. For borrowing the crane. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, add on for the con, the-
Appointment to the economic development committee. Who are we appointing?
Uh, Laura Pedrone. She visited us at the last EDC meeting and she loved it so much. She said she would like to join.
Okay, you have to repeat that.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Laura Pedrone to the economic development committee.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Good.
And she was, uh, she wanted to apologize. She had other things planned for tonight. Uh, she wanted to be here and meet everybody, but.
She, she figured Fairhaven and bought, bought a place on Main, North Main, North Main. About the last year.
Welcome aboard. And-
Did you hear a second?
Yeah, we voted it. Chad seconded it.
Didn't we all vote it?
Yep, we did.
All right, um, parking lot, you had, you had something you wanted to talk about?
Wait, we're gonna skip over revenue efforts?
Oh, revenue.
I'm fine with skipping over it, but.
Revenue efforts, anything new to report?
Yeah, so I finally started moving on the transfer station. Uh, we're gonna clean up what's considered the dog pound now and, uh, turn that into what I'm calling the swap shop with my goal of, um, bringing in a little bit of cash and then reinvesting that money into the transfer station. And we pay a lot of money to remove freon from, um, our appliances. So I, I think slowly, slowly, I wanna use that to kinda build off that and, and improve our services downtown or down at the transfer station.
So we would have to, to do that, we, I think, one of the things we'll have to do is come up with a policy that you're gonna write that says what we, you know, what, what, the condition of things we would accept and that kind of thing like that.
Yeah, rules of what you can and can't leave. Yeah, cause we don't want your bag of garbage.
Right, we don't want this, we don't want the revenue generating swap shop to cost us money. That's, that's my only concern.
Sure. If it makes, if it makes you feel any better, I did this in my last town. We had really good success.
You won't believe the stuff I find almost on a weekly basis that I totally dump and I bring home.
It's good to see.
Yes, I would. I do it too.
Oh, it's, I found like a, almost nyl- nylon, uh, U-Haul truck that was in the middle of dumpster. I was like, just missing the grill. I was like, boat motor. I, I found a galvanized stock tank.
Yeah, it's, it's-
You want that stuff?
TVs.
Yeah.
Good.
TVs that work. All right, anything else? At this point? Okay, let's go to the parking lot, which I tried to jump ahead.
No, you're fine. I, I was wondering, seeing how we have a lot of work gonna be done by the planning commission on subdivision regulations, downtown designation and neighborhood designation. I'd like those three things added to the parking lot. Cause that's, that's a good way of us keeping it in front of us and if we, if we don't remember, it helps me remember to say, Bob, how we doing on this one, this one, or this, or get us talking about it. Yeah.
Now, what was this?
Subdivision regulations.
Yeah, okay.
Downtown designation.
You got that.
And neighborhood designation.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what that one is.
That's the one where the down, village designation this big, downtown designation this big, neighborhood designation this big.
Uh, okay.
From a historical building and getting funds to, to do things. Yep.
All right.
That's, that's probably not required for, for, to get the Act two fifty exemptions.
No, all we need is the subdivision and you're, and I think you're working downtown and subdivision almost concurrently. Uh, but I just wanted the neighborhood designation just so as a placeholder. Say it might be two, three years out there even before you get there on that one. That's okay.
We're, um, we had our first meeting with the Rutland Regional. Um, just to tag onto this, uh, last, or two ones these ago. And we'll talk about it again tomorrow. Um, the goal is to be done by the end of the year, to have both of those play, things in place. Um, and have it, have it approved by the state. Um, the subdivision, I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten from Rutland Regional. They were gonna give us just a template of what needs to be in it. And, and some, I think Polney has it and, uh, Castle and may have it. So. And so that's what we'll, we'll do. We'll go through it one, a couple nights probably take us. Figure out what we need in Fairhaven, what the state needs at the basic level. So we don't miss any of that. And, um, go from there. And one thing that, one thing that was encouraging was the, the explanation of it, you know, a quarter mile circle from, from the downtown designation to a half mile circle. It doesn't exactly have to be a circle, cause a lot of the circle that, the quarter mile particularly gets us down to the river and unbuildable projects, you know, unbuildable land. And there's not a lot of buildable land in that area. So we may be able to oblong that circle a little bit. Um, as long as we don't get too greedy, the state will, the state is, is looking for housing and they're looking for um, projects. So they're, they're willing to work with everybody. Is, is the, you know, see what we say when we get down to the brass tacks, but so far it looks like they want, they wanna help towns in that way. That's good. So.
Good.
Subdivision is moving right along. And what we have to do for downtown isn't horrific. At this point. Okay. Um, board roundtable.
Just have one thing. Um, when are the strippers gonna finish our painting? Because
Yeah, well, I see what they stopped.
One, one side of what, of, uh, Twenty-two A coming down through is not done. One side of North Main Street is not done.
They'll, they'll be back. I can call them and see, but that's the state schedule.
It's kinda funny. They left them two spots.
I don't know if anybody noticed the straight line on Washington Street. Did anybody notice the straight line? Maybe just take a look at that white line.
Well, I was gonna ask the chief to give them a sobriety test before they painted it again. Just that they did, they got straightened out after a while, Bob. They got off to a rough start.
Didn't have no scuff, you know? They'll come back around.
Maybe not. But, uh, they are coming back.
They'll come back around, yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll see if there's a schedule.
I just, it's been a while. I've just, I thought maybe they were coming back through from the other way, but it's been a while now. So. I was gonna ask a couple of weeks ago, but I said I'd wait a while and see what happened. And that's all I have.
Got a couple of things. Uh, big, uh, thing is I was down behind the school Saturday. Um, I understand baseball's over with, but is there a reason we let the baseball fields grow in? I mean, we, didn't we give them a ton of money and to make that look nice? And I think it looks like absolute crap. All, everything's overgrown and not mowed and, you know, I-
In order to keep the infield's free of grass, uh, it, it would have to be sprayed regularly. Um, it, it's a tough, it's a tough thing. I think the reality is, uh, it, it has to be maintained you know, very frequently. Um, I think every year is gonna be the expense of having to kind of, uh, you know, till it up and add more on top and, you know, combat the grass as it tries to grow. Uh, it's a tough one.
We can just get the rec director down there. That's, that was part of that job is to make sure that's maintained.
Yeah, I mean, um, and then I know we've kinda brought this up, I brought it around school time about crosswalks and stuff like that, but I know we did the ones around the school, but do we have a schedule for DBW to touch up all the other markings on all the other streets and crosswalks and stop lines? Just kinda freshen those up. I mean, I know this kinda year doesn't really make sense, but.
They were waiting on more of the stick down, but let me see, cause I haven't heard anything in weeks about that. So let me ask.
Fresh car pan, things would be nice. It should be like a yearly, yearly thing. And that's all I've got.
Oh, good.
Just a couple items. Apple Fest is Saturday, so, um, to get out there and support, uh, our, uh, great school as well as our rec department's gonna be doing something. So it's a great, great opportunity there. And I just wanted to acknowledge, I, in my mail slot, I had a letter from the cemetery committee. Uh, and, uh, we'll, we'll talk more on that, but it was looking at budget season coming up and wanting us to consider monies and so more, more to follow. That's it.
Um, the only thing I got is, uh, just cause it's budget season coming. Could you give us, uh, an estimate, a, a working, a working figure we can figure on for, um, cost per foot for sidewalk?
Yes, I have that.
For foot?
For sidewalks. Cost per foot. Just so we can, when we decide what we're doing, we don't over, overspend.
Yeah.
So. That's it.
Ready for the financials?
I am.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Everybody else was ready.
I, well, I gotta find the right piece.
You, you, you let me know when you're ready, Claire.
You heard it.
There we go.
Okay, I'll make a motion to pay the payroll of thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-five cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll make a motion to pay the warrant of one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-three cents.
You wanna read those off?
Of which Bob will share with you.
Oh, you can.
Okay, uh, that was, uh- Okay, uh, that was, uh, a five hundred and ninety-seven thousand school payment, a grant repayment of eighty-seven thousand, a truck payment of seventy thousand, sewer bond payment of seventy-four thousand, and water, uh, bond payment of forty-nine thousand. Uh, those are.
I've never had a warrant that high.
That, that's a, that's a big one.
You're second.
Relatively, yes.
Come to, come to. Close your mouth.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And the checkbook status, we're in a negative two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-three cents.
This is where you say, don't worry about that.
Don't, don't worry about that, we, we've got funds.
So, on your, that, that looks wild, I get that this time of year. Um, so on your financials, you'll see there's still three point something million dollars due to us and taxes and everything. So, you're okay.